Good afternoon, everybody. First item on our agenda is a special session, so in order to do that, I'll entertain a motion to go into special session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson to go into special session. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, we're here to consider the approval of a purchase for the Parks Division for a new vehicle.
Mr. Mayor, hereby moved from mayor and council approval of the purchase of the 2015 Chevy Silverado to replace Parks Division Unit Number 309 from Chriswell Auto Fleet Sales in Gaithersburg, Maryland, in the amount of $30,684.48.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess the only discussion I have is I'm going to vote for this. I know how much the fleet was neglected during the years when we had, and we still are, going through a budget crisis. We started to catch up a year or two ago, and now we're back into fiscal difficulties, but we can't avoid making purchases for critical equipment, and for that reason, I'm going to vote for it, but I'm not sure how much longer we can continue to replace everything that we need. Just throwing it across the bow, but I think this is worth doing.
I will note for the record that the current vehicle, Number 309, said 59 service repair orders to the tune of $10,000, so it does seem like a worthwhile investment.
I concur, Mayor, with the salvage value estimated $1,000.
Any other discussion?
Will the vehicle be doing different job duties than what the current vehicle does?
Yes.
Okay. Because I noticed it's going up in size, capacity, and drive train.
I would hope so.
Okay.
And you want the four-wheel drive instead of two-wheel.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the purchase is approved. Thank you all for that. We'll adjourn our special session and go into work session. First item is the Bike Maryland Bronze Award presentation. We have a guest, Nate Evans, from Bike Maryland, and we have a few of the members of the Bicycle Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know that we received the Bicycle Friendly Community Award Bronze Status, and with us today...
And with us today is Nate Evans, who's the Executive Director of Bike Maryland, and he will be presenting the award to the city.
Great.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nate Evans. I'm from Bike Maryland. We're based down in Baltimore, but we represent the entire state of Maryland and the cycling interests thereof. And I've been on the directorship since about August, and one of the first things that we were assigned was to review the bicycle-friendly application for Hagerstown in August. And we looked it over. We didn't really have a good basis, but one of the things that we knew we had to do after reviewing that application was we needed to come out to Hagerstown.
And take a bike ride.
And take a bike ride, absolutely. We were just so impressed with everything that was in the application, whether it was the Hagerstown Bicycle Advisory Committee led by Joyce Martin, the New Bicycle Master Plan, the Hub City Bike Loop, the endless Bike Month event calendar that would seem to be packed, so we'll definitely have to come back in May.
And with the... Ride with the mayor?
Absolutely, yes. And also with the safety video, the encouraging people how to ride safely. All these things really led up to the fact that there was no way that we couldn't give Hagerstown a bicycle-friendly award. So on behalf of the League of American Bicyclists, I am pleased to offer the Bicycle Friendly Community Award at the bronze level.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Rodney.
Mr. Mayor, that's you.
Thank you for your work. Photo op?
Well, you can go on the end. We can pivot everyone around this direction.
Okay. That's what we're doing. All right, on three, you ready? One, two, three.
We have one more sign. This is the Route Shield.
Oh, okay.
Place on Road Sign.
Excellent.
Indicating our Bicycle Friendly Community status.
Do another one on three. One, two...
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Special day, thank you. And thank you, Alex. Next item on our agenda is the 2015 bond issuance. We have our Director of Finance here with us. Continuing discussion from last week.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do want to mention before we get started too far along that I have a meeting scheduled later this week specifically regarding the ladder truck. We have been ongoing with an RFP, and we've recently got all the results, and I'm sitting down with the committee. It's possible that next week I'm coming back with a figure slightly larger than the $950,000 for the bond, based on what we have heard preliminarily on the RFP. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. I don't want to give you a number right now because I want to make sure that I sit down and work through all the numbers and have a good final figure for you, but I'll be sure to send that out.
So the truck may cost more than the estimated $950,000?
Right. Well, the $950,000 is just a city share. It's anticipated that the volunteer company will also put forth $150,000 towards that as a contribution, but yes, the preliminary results right now are in more than that. Ladder trucks are very pricey.
Apparently.
So I think for the most part, just here because we need to continue the discussions on the bond issue, the main reason it's so important, timing-wise, is that we already have made some purchases previously, specifically that date back as far as October 2013. And timing-wise, in order to be reimbursed for those things that were going to be covered by bonds, we need to make sure that we adhere to a strict schedule so that we can close this bond by April. So as long as we can continue the discussions and can agree on a listing of projects, look forward to coming back and doing an introduction of an ordinance Tuesday, January 27.
I mean, as we talked about, or I mentioned last week, there's a number of projects on the list with question marks, not anticipating that the mayor and council would make a decision on each of those this evening, anticipating we'll have a bond issue in the spring of 2016, which would give the mayor and council the opportunity to further consider those projects because of the timing. I think you're going to need more information.
Correct.
So we're not requesting decisions on projects with question marks.
Correct. So for the most part, we'd be looking at a bond issue, a total bond issue of close to $10 million. The majority of everything on here would be tax-exempt. Still in preliminary discussions with our bond council, who is still recommending that the one project on here, which is the property at the former Melp, the initial $650,000, be a taxable series, just because of the nature of the project right now and the fact that we don't own the property yet. So I will continue those conversations and hopefully have something more resolved and finalized from her by next week, but as of right now, it looks like simultaneous issues. We have done it in the past. Actually, we did it in 2009, which was the last time we actually issued a public bond for the general fund side.
And one thing I didn't do, if I could just jump in one more time, I didn't go over this page, which is a copy of the page from the current year's budget last week.
Okay.
And you might just show how the bond issue we're talking fits into that schedule of what we had anticipated in the budget, just so council can connect the two.
Absolutely. If you flip to that page, it just says "General Fund Financial Projections." This is a sheet straight from our fiscal year '15 budget book, and this is just showing on the general fund side all outstanding debt that we currently have. And then at the very bottom, you're going to notice the ones that are in italics, and they say the words "future." So at that point, we still had a bond for 2014, which we did the private placement. And then you can see for fiscal year '15, we had in monies 3.1 million, and I'm sorry, fiscal year '14, the future. Those two together are the one that is combined, that we're looking to start right now to cover those projects. So for the general fund side, we had anticipated in the debt projections and in the out years for annual debt service to have another 4.1 million. So looking at the current listing of the general fund projects, we are pretty much right on track with the projections at that point.
A little bit lower right now.
A little bit lower, dependent upon what happens with the ladder truck, but still anticipating to be lower than what was in the budget. So do we want to look over the listing of the bond projects? Do we...
We've done it a lot of times, haven't we?
Well, I think the main thing is, we're not going to have answers to any of the items that have question marks, because those are...
And those are the big issues.
Question marks at this point still.
Yeah.
So I don't, I think it would be wise for us to continue with, just to proceed with what we do know and get the process underway.
Certainly. So within the general fund, right now, we're sending a request, a bond issue of 3.87 million. Again, just a reminder, that's to cover fiscal year '14 budget items as well as fiscal year '15. The two biggest dollar amounts are our new A&amp;E City Park Trail for 1.5 million, as well as the ladder truck. And that is ladder truck for Pioneer Hook and Ladder.
I think with all of these projects, these are investments in either the capital equipment or infrastructure. The trail in particular being one that is in line with the Urban Partners' recommendation for the housing that we anticipate going in, in that corridor. So the trail is really sort of the starting point for creating the re-envisioning of that whole neighborhood and giving it a purpose. So I do think that, you know, they are all worthwhile projects that further enhance the infrastructure or other capital needs of the city.
Correct.
And the, could you just summarize again, the ones for the electric and water and wastewater fund, how those are paid for? They come out of the revenues from those particular funds, is that right?
Yes, the direct charges for services from those funds, they actually pay their share of the annual debt service requirements. It's allocated, and it's done at the time, semi-annually, will pay interest semi-annually in the principal once a year. And those monies come directly, the light fund will be charged for their allocated portion of the $650,000, which is for roof. It is one of the few items that was not anticipated at the time that we did the budget, but the age of the roof and the condition of the roof makes it necessary at this point. And likewise, water and wastewater, the charges for services will cover it, and they did at the same time in the fiscal year '15 budget, in our financial projection section, include estimates for debt service for these specific projects that are here. The roof for the light fund and the A&amp;E trail are, and the windows for property management were the only three items not included in our fiscal year '15 as a specific item, but dollar-wise, the annual debt service was included.
Is it the anticipation on the general fund side that future bond issuances will include this $100,000 for the stormwater management retrofit and regulatory process?
The $100,000 that's in this one right now is for now.
I know it's for now.
And then in the future, you're saying, in additional years?
Yeah.
It is possible that in additional years, as more projects specifically that relate to stormwater will be included as bond financing, just because of the nature of those projects, the price tag associated with those projects, and the current condition of our operating funds.
And then the 1.5 million for the link of the A&amp;E District with the City Park, is this now solidifying, speaking for that sort of one and a half million that we had discussed during budget deliberations of being out there for some project downtown?
Yes.
That's how we saw it, or at least that it gave us that opportunity in terms of our prior forecasts and planning.
And that we would then come back in fiscal year '16 budget and redo the downtown redevelopment project with another 1.5 million.
We tried to also frame that amount based on the discussion you had in November when Rodney came in and presented the report on the project.
And looking really at what's striking while the iron is hot, which projects are ready to go now as opposed to what might be anticipated in the future, I think is the other reason why...
Timing-wise, correct.
We want to include that project.
And looking at all the priorities and all these other projects that do have question marks, but just working right now, we're already working and in the midst of our fiscal year '16 requests for CIPs. It's just, we're anticipating that we're definitely going to need another issue in 2016 for a multitude of projects.
And I'm assuming the debt management policy was included, just as a reminder, but could you just tell everybody that with these new obligations, we're still within our accordance, in accordance with our debt management policy?
Yes, especially because we just revised the debt management policy and worked diligently and updated it, but yes, with the current request with this specific issue, we are still within all of our criteria that is outlined in the debt management policy. And again, was actually included in our financial projections, the annual debt service expenditures and stuff, and such as we did the budget.
Oh, please, Mr. Rebecca.
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, these are all general obligation bonds, even though the ones that deal with our special funds are being paid for by those special funds. But we will have to keep track, as I've said, of what our bond capacity is, and as long as we keep using our GO guarantee, handing it out, which we should do because it keeps rates down, but we also have to monitor, because a lot of places, they just use that for their general funds, and the special funds are issued under a different rubric. But I think for now, we should proceed that way. It's just that we need to have a system of monitoring and measuring our capacity and making sure that we're underneath that in the future years as well as the current year. I have looked at the question mark projects and thought about them, and I thought about the City Park Trail in conjunction with that. I was enthused when the city engineer brought in the plans, but encouraged him to do a good job erring on the side of quality, safety, attractiveness, because otherwise, it will not be used and will go maybe almost the opposite direction. I do have some concern that if I was looking at all these projects and had a choice of which one to start the starting blocks, that would not be it, but we don't have that choice. I do reserve the right to continue to monitor what we do with the trail. I don't want us to have a rubber stamp and just say, "We're going to do it regardless." We need to look at it, make sure it's a good project, and we need to do our utmost to make sure we get value-added by getting people to really use it, getting it for economic development between the park and downtown. Just putting it there won't do the job, I can guarantee you. And also that the Phase Two is well-integrated into the Phase One. I know city staff is enthusiastic about moving ahead with this, and I appreciate that. And I think, let's work on it, let's make it a good project, and let's try to make it sync with some of these other projects. There's projects that we may have to spend bond money on, by the way, such as the central lot. We don't know whether just the land is going to be enough to make that project work. To me, that's the most cost-effective valuable project that we had, that Urban Partners gave us, and if it doesn't, and it gives me qualms because it doesn't rehab buildings on Washington Street. If I had my druthers, we'd have buildings going up in the parking lot, we'd have some rehab commitments, and then we'd be running a trail between those activity centers. All that said, for now, let's go forward with the City Park Trail. There was a technical concern I had with that also, and that is, if by some chance that project didn't move forward, we would need to spend those bond proceeds within 18 months of issuance. I believe that enough other things are in the pipeline that we would be spending that money, and instead of using them in a future issue, we'd be able to spend it by transferring it to those projects. But this is a real chess game, because some of these projects aren't eligible for straight GO bonds, in my opinion.
Correct.
Projects where we spend money on property that we don't own, the Maryland Theater, projects like that, we may have to go to a different type of bond. So for a lot of reasons, I think it's going to be an interesting spring, because I see that in conjunction with, you know, getting our budget situation squared away is a real challenge for this council, to set our priorities for the rest of the term, and the money's going to be, it's going to be tough. I see at least 12 to 15 million to do these projects here, and just anticipating a partial city share in most of them. So how we can swing that, it's going to be very interesting to see how all that squares And I'm only saying that partly because of my mental process. I almost said, "The City Park Trail, let's wait," but no, let's move forward. We do that too often. If something happens, if the time isn't ripe, we can still use those proceeds elsewhere.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or feedback? Mr. Munson?
Marty, your points are well-taken and very much on target, and I particularly agree with you with regard to the use of the trail, managing the trail in such a way that it attracts people, and utilizing the trail in such a way that it attracts people to downtown Hagerstown. Otherwise, if it's not proactively utilized and managed, it's going to be empty, just as you said.
Just a quick up...
I was just going to say, it's very easy to be very short after hearing this. I totally agree with everything that's been said.
Well, just in regard to the trail, just a quick update. Rodney's working with Man Reichel on the design of the park, little parklet component. We've got a group of citizens that are helping in reference to the public art with some pretty good enthusiasm, I think, building off of the bear sculpture and the addition of public art, so that's underway. We've got HLD working on the lighting, HPD working on the cameras, so we've kind of been moving ahead full steam with the goal of having a request for bids out in April.
Great.
So just a quick status report there.
Any other questions or feedback?
Oh, and I also wanted to, while we're on finances, and I hope I'm not premature, but I think, Bruce, we've talked about it, Michelle, I asked for a budget update, a comprehensive update of where we are with the current budget by next month, so that in making these kinds of decisions, we know where we are. We've had lots of puts and takes, and I don't want to start pulling them out of my back pocket remembering one thing, forgetting about something else over here. So I believe we're going to get a budget presentation.
A mid-year report.
Mid-year report.
Yeah.
Mid-year budget report.
Yeah, and Michelle and I have talked about that.
On the budget status.
We thought some point in time.
So I think that would help us all to make these decisions.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to be clear, then, we'll put this on for the 27th for introduction. If we have an update on the ladder truck before then, we'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And by the way, we're continuing to support the fire service.
Indeed. All right, our next agenda is the Blues Fest Poster Artist Announcement. Karen Giffen's going to introduce some folks. Hi, Mary Ann. Hi, Carl.
Hello.
Hello. Happy New Year.
Welcome.
Before we announce the 2015 Blues Fest Poster Artist, we just wanted to say, first of all, coming up is the 20th anniversary of the Blues Fest.
Wow.
We have a great lineup. I'm going to have Carl talk a couple minutes on that, and Mary Ann will go to the selection, and then we'll announce the artist and unveil the artwork, which we're very excited about.
Well, I just wanted to thank you again for all your support for the past 20 years, especially City Administrator Zimmerman, and all councils present and former, and mayors present and former. We have an exciting event coming up on May 29 through May 31, and it's going to be a continuation of a theme we've been developing over the last few years of Old Friends and New. In fact, one of the artists is going to be from our very first Blues Fest Number One that's going to be coming. I can't really go into a lot of detail about who the artists are because we're in the process of finalizing contracts, and we always like to be careful that we have those completely nailed down before we announce it, but really exciting lineup of people, a very good value event, close to home, another key theme that we give everyone. I think in terms of Sunday, you're going to see that we are, in recognition of our 20 years, giving away an incredible show in City Park on Sunday, which is again one of our free days as is Thursday. And we're just really thrilled. Our committee energy has been extremely good, and we're all raring to go. So, and one of the things we're so pleased about, that Mary Ann's going to tell you about, is the artwork this year, which has come back around to a local spin on it, and without stealing your thunder...
Don't take, I don't have that much to say, don't.
Yeah.
But each year, the Western Maryland Blues Fest Committee, along with the Washington County Arts Council, has a search for the visual artist whose work will be used for all promotions and advertising for the entire festival season. This year was the same, no difference, except it was for our 20th year. Although some of our submissions were a little bit less than in other years, the quality just outstanding and surpasses what we've received in other years, and this made the task of the committee much more difficult, and we spent hours reviewing the artwork. And we're really pleased with our own selection of the artist and the artwork. In addition to having the artist's work used on all the promotions and advertisements, the artist has afforded a month-long exhibit at the Washington County Arts Council, and I have been told that everybody needs to buy a piece of this artist's work, that this will become very valuable in future years. So we're very excited to have chosen a local individual, and I'll turn that over to Karen then. And with that, our selection this year, and we're going to bring this young man up in a second, is Corey Householder. He is a senior at the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, so within our time that we've had the Barbara Ingram School, this is our second winner. And I'm going to have Rob Hovermell come up to say a few words about this young man and Dr. Roberts, and then we'll bring Corey up to unveil. And his family is here, his mother, his father, his grandfather, and his sister as well.
Why we need to be accurate, why? I just don't... We're going to bring those...
We didn't say that. Yes, we should.
This is truly an honor, speaking on behalf of this school, because the Blues Fest is such a great big deal down here for Hagerstown, and this being the 20th year. This young man that you're about to meet embodies the spirit of Barbara Ingram School. He's not only very, very talented, which you will see in a few seconds, but he's a great writer, he's an actor, he does just about everything, and he's a great student. And he does that because he's talented, but he also does that because he is very, very hard-working, and we're just extremely proud of him and happy that this is... hardworking, and we're just extremely proud of him, and happy that this is, you're going to see this. And I would echo what Mary Ann said, that make sure you get out to that and get some art, because you're going to want to hold on to that for a couple of years, and it will become very, very valuable very soon.
I would just like to add that when Erin won the poster contest a few years ago, I, I thought, there's nobody that could be more deserving, but I think that Corey is absolutely the most deserving student that we've ever had, and I'm just so pleased that he was chosen for this, because he certainly has worked very hard, and so consistently, the entire time he's been at Barbara Ingram, and as Mr. Hovermell said, across so many different disciplines. So, we're really just thrilled that he's able to contribute to the Blues Fest in this way.
Might I add, that this was a totally blind selection. We did, we worked hard to not know any information about the artists submitting this year.
And anecdotally, what's really interesting is, as Mary Ann said, we have these really high-quality submissions, well, we came down to two submissions, and we must have spent a half hour looking at one, looking at the other, and they're both so great, and they were both from Corey.
And we had no idea. We had no idea.
No idea at all.
And we didn't know as a student, and we're so pleased that it worked out that way.
And Corey will be Pinocchio in track coming up, one of, one of the Pinocchios going up in tracks, so. With that, Corey, would you like to come up? Now, I know the answer to this, Corey, but would you like to say a couple of words?
Um, sure.
Do you want to unveil first?
Um, sure, why not? Do that.
We'll get Carl up there with you.
All right. Don't want any snags. On the count of three, one, two, three. Very nice.
You want to say anything about your artwork, or being part of this?
I am very grateful to be a part of the Hager, the Western Maryland Blues Fest. I am very grateful to have won the contest, especially against so many other great artists. And, in this piece, I really tried to bring out the excitement and vibrant feeling of the Blues Fest, and how it appeals to so many people of, and just the joy it brings to, I know some families in Hagerstown and across the nation, and, yeah. How's your plans for after high school? I hope to study animation, and hopefully go working in the animation film industry, and perhaps after that, maybe, perhaps move into film direction. I don't know, the future seems hazy right now, but I know that is the industry I want to upbeat. So, have you got your college applications out? Have you heard back from anybody? You have a top choice that you're looking at? My top choice right now is probably Cal Arts, that's in California. They are the number-one school for animation in the world right now. Well, good luck to you, and you certainly have another great thing to put on your resume here. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
And special thanks to the whole Householder family that came today for answering.
Indeed, thank you. Erin, did you want to take any pictures?
Would you want to get a group photo with Carl and Mary Ann and everyone? Yeah, we can move it so that-
Where do you want to move?
Over there.
Mom, dad, family, you guys want to come up?
Rena?
What's your home school, Corey?
North High.
North High, great. You tell me, you're the expert here. I don't want to touch the artwork, I feel like I'm on a, I don't want to screw anything up here. What do you want to put in? Where do you want the salt to stand? Hi, nice to meet you, congratulations.
Yeah, Dr. Roberts. Try to get, yeah.
Can I kiss her?
Yeah, there you go. Okay, right here, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, congratulations again, good job.
And, Corey, there's something small to give to you.
Can't imagine what the other one looks like if, you must have been working hard. Well, that's great.
Yeah, I'll come and get it.
Congrats again, good luck to you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, our next item is the CDBG Federal Record Keeping Reconciliation.
Earlier this week, staff had sent an email communication to the mayor and council to discuss our Community Development Block Grant Program reconciliation of the online recording system and drawdown system that we have for the CDBG program. And, we work constantly with the Department of Housing and Urban Development to make sure we're reconciling and keeping the system fresh, and occasionally, we do have some older activities that require some regulatory steps, and, in specific cases, amendments to our older action plans. Most of these items are housekeeping issues, and typically, we deal with those on the staff level, but there are instances which we, which one we'll be discussing tonight, where we do need some mayor and council, mayor and council direction. And one of these instances is an older project that was designated a few years ago, where we designated CDBG funds for parking at the Alm's House. That project was stalled after, after CDBG environmental review requirements, and Maryland Historical Trust requirements required an archaeological study at the property, which was going to render that project basically infeasible with the amount of funding that was available. So, what we wanted to do tonight was discuss with the mayor and council the needed step to have an official amendment for the funding that was in the, the CDBG record-keeping IDIS program, to a different activity in the current year, action plan, and also seek direction from the mayor and council to open up the discussion to the community on actually moving forward with something at the Alm's House, the property. I have a little fact sheet on the property that I want to pass out real quick to the mayor and council.
While you're doing that, why do we care what the Maryland Historical Trust says?
Don't go there on this one.
Because, you know, it seems to me they keep presenting all kinds of barriers to any redevelopment of some of these older properties, but yet, they have no money to give us to compensate for their decisions.
History is history, Dave.
I understand, I'm-
And this is a part of history.
And I'm not arguing that.
That needs to remain.
I'm not arguing that, I'm arguing the fact that Maryland Historical Trust-
Oh, I know, they don't have any money.
Throws up barriers to projects that we've had in, in the past, that, then they don't have any funding to compensate for the decisions that they're making.
Yeah, in, in our block grant program, the regulations, I believe they're called Section 106 requirements, stipulate that essentially, anything we do with, with block grant funding has to automatically go to the State Historic Preservation Office, and, and most of the time, we, we are, you know, compliant and, with, with the things that we are doing, of course, but there are sometimes cases, because of certain properties, or a certain age of the structures, or an area where the structure or property would be located, where we do have some, some issues that, that cause-
I mean, it's so easy for them to say, "Yeah, do an archaeological study," but then they don't do anything to help us pay for it, or enable that action to happen. I think that's just wrong, and I don't think, you know, I don't know why we keep tolerating that. But continue.
But, just the handout has some brief facts. The city acquired the property in 2004 for $90,000. It was adopted by the mayor and council in 2009 as a landmark overlay, which essentially creates like a one-property historic district, so, the other historic district in the city of Hagerstown have to go through HTC review for exterior improvements, and this overlay essentially makes that a one-property historic district.
Before that adoption, was the property subject per the purchase of, the $90,000 purchase, was it subject to any Maryland Historic Trust preservation guidelines?
Not that I'm aware of, because-
So, that overlay wouldn't have occurred, those guidelines wouldn't apply.
The local HTC guidelines, I don't, I don't think would apply. I think Kathy Mark could maybe explain a little bit better, so-
So, if the city was the entity that imposed the landmark over the property, I'm assuming the city has the ability to remove that, just as well.
But it would not remove the Maryland Historical Trust process for review of use of federal or state funds.
Why not?
Because it doesn't matter whether it's designated or not, it's whether it's eligible for designation or it's designated.
And let's set state and federal funds that aren't coming to this property aside. If we remove that designation, does it offer greater flexibility in redevelopment of the, the structure and the property? In other words, does it remove the, the leg of archaeological, Phase One archaeological study? If we remove that 2009 landmark overlay, and we don't use state and federal funds?
My understanding is if we don't use state and federal funds, if we, we would then be likely okay to not have to deal with the archaeological study.
It probably has something to do with that. If we purchased the property with-
That's what I'm asking, the $90,000 that we used to purchase it, did that create that subjective-
No.
-status, or did the 2009 landmark overlay create it?
The archaeological requirement was created based upon the 2012 potential parking activity with CDBG funds, is-
What did we use to purchase?
I, that was in 2004, and that's testing my memory on it, I would probably have to do a little more research, but I don't believe it was-
Probably need to find out.
Yeah, I don't believe it was anything federal at, at the time.
I thought that it was.
I'd be surprised if it wasn't.
And, and the reason that I'm saying that-
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, the reason that I'm saying that is because that's the reason that we had whoever it was, from wherever, can't remember her name, and she came up here, because the monies that were used, they had to specifically be for that. I don't remember all of it.
I think we might have used community legacy funds to button up the building.
Yes.
We did do that.
Did use community legacy funds.
But what was the purchase?
My guess is it was CDBG. That's just a guess, so why don't we find out? We're all sitting here-
And it was with Larry, Larry?
We're all sitting here thinking we know, but, yeah.
Larry, Larry?
Yeah.
We can find that out.
I don't know if it was Larry or George. I think it was George.
What would be some potential uses for this property?
I think what we want to do is, is to, to actually have some outreach, and conduct some outreach to the community, to, to obtain some feedback from the community on potential ideas for the project, or a project that's-
Is this property a competitive negotiated sale?
I don't believe it is right now, and we can-
Because they would be subject to those same terms of governance.
If, well, wait a minute, if, if we purchased it with federal or state money, the question, the current question comes up because of the, apparently, because of wanting to do the parking and using CDBG funds for it, right? That's what you're stating is the instigator.
Yes.
Some of us are thinking that, that it was already-
Right.
-subject to that.
It seems to me that we're doing a good job of really spinning our wheels, because we're sitting here having a lot of discussions about, a lot of what ifs. There is an answer that can probably be found relatively quickly by staff. I'd suggest we put this off to the next work session, when we find out what we can and can't do. If the $90,000 were used, we'd have to pay back.
Yeah, I'm fine with moving the $50,000.
Yes.
My, my question gets to your fourth bullet that we haven't even talked about, which is a million dollars. We just sat and talked about a bond issuance of six projects that are more than a million bucks, and this, I don't think even comes up to that radar, so I'm just trying to figure out what steps we need to take in reference to our historical steps we've taken to date to move the property in some reasonable fashion.
Right.
Either into our own preservable status, or some private preservable status, or redevelopment status, because I, I mean, I don't-
So, we need to find out about the $90,000.
So, there's more information we need to find, but on the action request, the $50,000, it sounds like we can make that decision without more information.
I think we need to make that decision.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue.
So, does anyone have any qualms about moving $50,000 to the single-family homeownership program? No? Okay. But I, I want, I want to know, I want to know what set the stage for, for the archaeological Phase One study. I don't know what that is, so I want to know what that really costs, and with the number of universities and things like that around that, that may conduct those things, I know you guys are, are busy as heck on, on a million things, but I'd be interested, as we've had other entities come in from universities and do studies and analysis on different facets of downtown before, to see if there's some other entity out there that, aside from this, would, would want to take on that type of fraud.
Maybe somebody'd like to do it.
I guess that's what I'm curious.
And Phase One is basically paper research. It's not digging in the ground, it's paper research.
That sounds boring.
Well, I don't know.
And our goal tonight was also to, to come back and, at a future work session with the mayor and council, and have ongoing discussions about this project.
While we're bringing up- Do the community outreach and begin to work with-
Sure.
For that process. It can't sit there the way it's sitting forever.
No, I think we're all working.
Well, the sad thing is, is that when there was people who were interested in doing something, and that was to use the facility, everybody just started throwing their arms up, and that had to do with basically the Civil War, which all of this then turned right around the corner and was linked. But, the whole historic part of this was in fact the building. The building that, because of it being what? Go back and tell me, because I have the envelope at, at home. It, what, the structure.
Then it was used as a hospital during the Civil War.
But the structure itself, Marty, it goes back to the brick, it goes back to all of this, that right now, I'm not remembering.
That's one of the oldest buildings.
Yes, it is. It's not only in Hagerstown, but it's the only Alm's House that is still remaining, and I don't know the location, if it is in fact in the state of Maryland, but it is the only one that is still remaining.
Or perhaps the oldest, yeah.
And it was, since if we're going to, and I do think we need to have a discussion of disposition, but we need to dig up the facts.
Correct.
This was put out once, as Penny indicated, for proposals, and there were proposals that came in, and for various reasons, they never made them, I don't even think they came in front of the council.
They didn't even come in front of the council, because that's what upset me. As I said, there was, there were those individuals that wanted to do film working in there, and they were able, they wanted to do in kind, as what, you know.
And all I want to know is if there's, there are proposals out there to do any of that, I want to know what hurdles we can remove at this table to encourage that to happen.
But by knowing some of that, we might be able to maybe eliminate some of those, yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
We can come back in a-
John, you just need a motion on the 27th, you need a motion to approve the transfer?
We will do a motion for the amendment, and we'll plan a future work session and do some additional digging, since this, I mean, this dates back a lot.
How appropriate that was.
Four days.
I can tell you, I also had the Sons of the Confederacy in here, so believe me, this was a big thing.
Well, I, I do want to thank Penny, because I know she takes a lot of her own time and effort to keep the outside of the Alm's House, the gardens and everything looking good, and so I do appreciate her efforts in that regard.
Yeah, you never know when you're going to get shot down, but you know what, you're still there.
I could help you out one week.
Thank you.
I don't want to hear it. All Sharon wants to just have a bulldozer and just take it all down. Al Shire wants to just have a bulldozer and just take it all down.
A million bucks.
His children will never know history.
Brings us to the last item on our agenda.
On to the foundation.
Private use of public sidewalks.
And if I could, while Kathy's getting situated, just to clarify, last week you had, we have two items under Chapter 216 that we brought to the mayor and council. This item we brought up before the holidays and we're back today. Last week, we had Chapter 216 sections on utility cuts and the reservation of parking spaces, some of those issues. Those issues have been referred to the Board of Parking and Traffic, so we'll probably be back maybe in March on the issue that we had on your agenda last week. So I just wanted to clarify that that one's still got some work to do. We're working with the Board of Parking and Traffic in reference to the utility cuts and the reservation of spaces and some of the things that Jim and Rodney talked about last week. Today, we were intending to talk about the private use of sidewalks that you talked about back in November and December.
Can I upset the apple cart just briefly? Speaking of that, I did, it was very well received, by the way, the detailed jobs you guys did on the utilities and all that. And I talked to some of the people that were concerned about it. One thing that was brought up, notice, better notice of when things are going to happen, that it's going to happen, what's going to happen? Can we somehow think about incorporating, you know, that they have to give better notice or that better notice is given? I don't remember that coming up. So with that, with the rest of you agreeing, I think a couple citizens said, "If I'd only known," whatever, so.
Well, one of the issues is to put the signs up and say it's going to happen XYZ days, and then nothing happens for two weeks.
And are signs enough? I mean, I don't know what notice is given, actually.
We tell them to take flyers around and deliver them to the people affected.
I did get a door hanger when the gas company came through the last time.
Door hangers.
Yeah.
My question to you is, is there's monies that they have to use within a certain timeframe? Is this why these projects? And I think to that is another reason why we really don't have enough time to be able to prepare everyone.
This year was particularly bad for Company Gas. There was some federal...
Yes.
...push to replace a lot of these older pipes.
Yeah.
And they obviously did it because they're everywhere in Hagerstown.
They are everywhere and anywhere and...
They'll back off, but you're right, I think that...
Yeah, and more cuts and more, you know, yeah.
Well, I just wanted to throw it out. Don't have specifics, but people said they needed better notice.
That's a good point. We'll see what we...
And notice of what too, what it is, yeah.
So that'll be back probably in March, Rodney, that section of 216.
Right, we're following up at the issue of the reservation of parking spaces. We're following up with the police on that, meeting with them specifically. Then we're back to the Board of Traffic and Parking. Until we get that all worked out, it might be March, so we're here.
That's an issue?
So today, we're back on the ordinance that was introduced on December 16th, which pertained to the use of public sidewalks for private purposes. Just wanted to make sure because that also can be an issue of discussion and debate by various folks in the community. And we just wanted to make sure before we move towards adoption, mayor and council, we're okay with what we've introduced today. I think I correct Kathy?
We were proposing that we add a new article to Chapter 216, which is private use of public sidewalks. There was four elements, licensing, the use of the sidewalk for displays of merchandise, the sidewalk cafe license process that we already have by policy that would be codifying that, and sidewalk yard sales, which right now are not really addressed, and then the licensing for right-of-way encroachments, which is something that we do by policy now, so it'd be codifying it. And so, one of the things that we talked about when we met with you about the use of the sidewalks for displays of merchandise is that we will be coming back to you at a future date to talk about the standards and conditions for licensing the businesses. And Rodney and I talked about that again today. Rodney had drafted a document, and we feel that we're 90% there. But one of the things we did discover as we were trying to figure out how the licensing and the insuring and everything would work for the abutting businesses as opposed to the activities associated with city events, we decided that perhaps if you're interested in this idea, that maybe we would want to tweak that section to make the licensing for businesses on the sidewalk be strictly for the abutters and allow the events to continue to function the way they do now under existing policies. And so that, right now, it says for private use of public sidewalks by businesses that abut, the area where the display will be, as well as for activities associated with city-sponsored and city-supported events. In order to do it, you have to have a license, and then there'll be special standards. And we think that it'd be a lot cleaner if this section just dealt with the abutters and that the city events remain to be handled the way they're handled now.
I agree.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a matter of striking out one line and adding a D that says, just like we said, it doesn't handle peddlers, it doesn't handle the events either. So if you're keeping a file...
Can I put it in with the file with the almshouse that I can't find?
So Kathy, show them which section you're talking about where you delete the sentence.
It would be for Section 21662. That's the sidewalk business license in the city center. And the very first paragraph where it says, "In the city center, mixed-use zoning district, the display of merchandise on the public sidewalk shall only permitted for abutting businesses and/or for city-sponsored or city-supported events," suggesting we strike that phrase "and/or" for city-sponsored or city-supported events. And it goes on to say, "If a license is granted by the city." And then it goes on to say, "The use of the sidewalk shall be subject to the criteria and the standards and conditions document that we're working on, and any ongoing displays in the public right-of-way shall be just for the effective dates. Anything that's not licensed shall cease operating upon the effective date of this amendment." And that it does not apply to the Chapter 176 vendors, peddlers, and transient dealers issue, which is, can be in public sidewalks. And then proposed to add a new section that says, "It also does not apply to activities on the public sidewalks associated with city-sponsored or city-supported events as those activities are addressed by separate city policy currently."
This does not apply to like a sandwich board that a restaurant puts out for its daily lunch specials or...
No.
That's not regulated under this.
With the Land Management Code package that we have right now, we're going to, proposing to codify that right now. They just sort of happen, they're not regulated, and we sort of say, "Well, they're not hurting anybody." So in the future, we're proposing actually saying, per business, when you have a storefront downtown, you don't have, your front yard is the sidewalk, that sandwich boards of a certain size in close proximity to the door, we permit it.
Okay.
But yeah, that would not, this doesn't deal with that.
In Section 21664, sidewalk yard sales, it says that, where does it say? Yard sales shall be defined as all general sales of public conducted. Where does it say? It says somewhere where yard sales are also defined elsewhere in the code or something, but...
The Land Management Code.
Yeah. Chapter 140 of the Land Management Code. Is there a specification within that section on the duration or number of times in which a yard sale can occur?
Yes.
Which is...
And we didn't put in here in case the Land Management Code changed, so you didn't have to change it around.
Four times a year.
But it says it's four times a year, three consecutive days...
Yeah, that's how it's written.
...per event.
Okay.
Would be the maximum yard sale.
So four times a year.
Yeah.
Three consecutive days.
Right.
Okay.
So, Don, we need to keep track of the one that's in our area.
Yeah, I think that there are a number that obviously occur, and I realize these are complaint-driven, but I think there are a number that occur clearly more than 12 days out of a year.
Oh, yeah.
Especially in, you know, the eight months of warmer weather.
Yeah, most people don't abuse the yard sale situation, but you end up having to adopt language like this because some people seem to have a permanent yard sale going on.
And then the only other question, I have 21665, Item E. It says, "Any such license agreement shall be signed by the applicant and recorded with the city clerk." And I don't know if you require this because it references license agreement in other language, but if the applicant is a tenant, do they have to provide an affidavit of approval from the owner? Okay. Thanks. Any other questions or feedback on this? I got one other question. On the, oh, where's the section that says five feet of clearance?
Yeah.
I noticed in some of the walks that five feet of clearance may be a bit, used a bit liberally. Who comes out and measures that? And does that, is that five feet of clearance permissible to include parking signs that are posted in the sidewalk or hydrants or utility poles, things like that, the street trees, the, we'll call it the brick and mossed or dirt area? Within that, is that permissible within the five feet of clearance? Because that seems to be a bit loose at the moment in some areas.
We were talking about this today. There's so many places downtown where there's ample sidewalk, and there's other places where there's not five feet right now.
Oh, yeah, I mean, locusts is, you know, you're two and a half feet in some places if you're lucky. But in what I would consider the, you know, the central business district of where these activities occur, especially use of outside sidewalk, it seems like in some areas, we would get dinged on the issue of an individual with accessibility limitations not being able to get through in areas where there's hydrants or street signs for, you know, parking for 20 minutes or whatever. And if five feet's going to mean five feet of clearance, as we're writing it right now, then I think we're going to have to stick to that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Because I know that that question has come up recently in Frederick, and there's a pretty strong approach in that jurisdiction because of those questions to ensure that that's being met.
Certainly not every property would be suitable for a sidewalk yard sale if your sidewalk is only 2 feet wide. And I guess in that case, you would go, like we used at the fairgrounds, I don't know if we still do, you could do yard sales.
But even if the cafe, even the outside cafes, I think in some instances, you know, when you, I can think of at least one where you go to make the turn where it's five feet if you count the brick and the, you know, the street planter, but, you know, you're riding on a mossed area or area where we have plantings. The city does not require, as part of the sidewalk license, benefits to be put up, correct? That's a liquor board requirement?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
If you're serving alcohol.
The five feet is based on some standard, isn't it?
Five feet, I think, is kind of the industry standard where two people could approach each other and pass each other comfortably. Five foot is why we build sidewalks if we're building a new subdivision. So, the ADA, I believe, is three feet is the bare minimum, but obviously two people couldn't pass.
I think three feet requires a waiver through the ADA process.
Okay.
You said the bare minimum.
Yeah, that'd be definitely the bare minimum.
He's probably right.
I think we use five feet just so that it's still kind of free pass.
Which is the new Maryland state highway standards.
The state highway is stricter than the ADA. We can make it less, I suppose, but that was our intent.
I just want to make sure when we're counting it that we're accounting for those other things.
So what are we saying? If there's not five feet there now, they can't do it?
No, I'm saying if there's any process for waiver that we're required to go through for it to meet ADA, that we should make sure that we're doing that, just so our ducks are in a row and that we're trying to assist in accommodating that business.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
If there's something that says, "Hey, we've got to go ask for a waiver to four feet or three and a half feet or whatever that we're doing it." And so that us and the business are, you know what I mean, consistent with whatever the ADA requirements are.
Is there a process for waiver for these kinds of sort of transient activities?
Well, maybe that maybe helps suggest that...
Well, I was asking them, yeah.
It comes back to the standards and conditions that Kathy mentioned a little bit ago. I think we ought to bring those into you. Have you approved those? And maybe that talks about a waiver process in there. It's how we, the code is relatively simple, the process of administering this can be a little more complicated, so that goes into these standards and conditions. So maybe we put that in there.
Right, because if there's room for reasonable flexibility without caving in, I think that would be good to do.
So you said you work on those standards and conditions and bring those back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, it seems to me like we ought to do that before the mayor and council adopt the ordinance, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
So we can do that next week? Okay.
At this point, the only place where five foot is mentioned in the code would be on the yard sales. The five foot for the sidewalk cafes and for the businesses putting out merchandise would be in these standards and conditions documents.
Okay, I need you to go back for clarification. Don, listen to me. The point, remember? The yard sale on the point, Hamilton and Potomac.
Right.
Now, if I'm hearing this correctly, if they are renters, do they have to have approval of the landlord to use that space?
For yard sales?
Yes. This was, this is really an ongoing yard sale, okay? We don't, you don't have to do that. I mean, I heard you say about tenants, okay, for the abutting, for the abutting, okay? All right. Okay. So what we have to be aware of is, in fact, where the yard sale continues, okay, throughout the summer, and it just continues on and on and on, that it's only supposed to be then four times a year, only three consecutive days. Yeah.
And that's state law.
Okay. Well, remember that, Don, because you and I are the ones that's traveling that route.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Right.
So we'll be back next week on our conversations.
It's that time again for city administrators' comments.
Just a reminder, next Monday, the 19th, is Martin Luther King Day, holiday that will be celebrated in the community and here at City Hall. That's it for me.
Council comments. Mr. Brubaker?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Alshire?
I think I have two comments. The first is, I was walking the other night, and I wanted to thank the police department because there's been two occasions in the last two weeks where I've saw folks, so I've seen folks stop. The one time here on Potomac, somebody was driving the wrong way up Potomac, and somebody pulled over to a car, and there was a police officer in his cruiser near the, I guess, funeral home, and somebody stopped and said, "Hey, somebody's driving up." So, and then there was another case where there was an altercation back here off of folks arguing back in Central Lot, and a police officer was there. So their presence is clearly being seen downtown, and folks are having the ability to approach, especially late in the evening to say, "Hey, you know, here's something I'm noticing."
And, you know, they're present and found within, you know, a moment's time for the
police department to be able to respond. So there's clearly a downtown presence, especially in the evening. And the second is, I don't live in the neighborhood, so I don't want to upset any apple carts for folks that do, but I just wanted to give some food for thought, is whatever the four-way stop sign is behind your house.
Oak Hill and Prospect.
Yeah.
You.
And walking up there and noticing the amount of times that cars just don't stop at that four-way stop, ever. And noticing the slowdown in traffic that occurred on Summit when they installed the circle, just food for thought. That intersection appears wide enough for that type of neighborhood enhancement device that I think would also help with the issue of folks not stopping at a stop sign because they're sort of using it like a circle anyway now.
Especially if they put in some improved pedestrian walkways.
Yeah, because there's no way at that intersection on two sides or two corners for somebody to sort of get out of the way, you know, or be able to cross in that fashion. Anyway, I don't live in the neighborhood, and I don't know what a circle would do to traffic in the neighborhood, but I think it would be a nice improvement.
I'm a fan of circles.
To what's a pretty wide street that folks seem to sort of use in a circular fashion now.
Fire department may not like that idea, though.
Yeah, but they make them so you can drive over them.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Just a thought.
It's a good thought. Mr. Munson?
Let me just mention that if Kristen's suggestion is taken that the people in the Let me just mention that if Kristen's suggestion is taken that the people in the neighborhood be consulted about it, I'm sure that, that would solve a lot of problems, or otherwise. I just have a comment. And on this, I may be jumping the gun a little, but I wanted to compliment and command the Bridge of Life Church across from the Maryland Theater down on South Potomac Street on its facade improvements. They've been working on those improvements for some time, and they look largely complete at this point. And they are absolutely beautiful. They enhance the area a lot. I'm sure it cost the church a lot of money to make those improvements, and so they're welcome to the neighborhood. The improvements are welcome in the neighborhood. It actually makes the building seem largely what it was in 1915 when the Maryland Theater was built. So it just shows what a good neighbor the church is, and we can be grateful for that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Ms. Nye?
Okay. We still have those who are crossing the dual highway. Dave, I don't know if sidewalks are even going to matter, because you know what? They're still going to cross the dual highway.
Have a fence like Frederick has.
I swear, because all I saw was the white bag. They're still continuing to do it.
You can see their footprints in the snow.
You know? And I mean, I, I don't know what to stop, how to stop it. It, you know, I, I see the women, I see them with the shopping carts, but this was a man, and he was actually going across right before Burger King. If I would not have seen the white bag, I would have never seen him. And I just don't know how to prevent it, you know? We get the whole thing on the dual highway, and what we're not doing right, but somebody else, too, that is crossing, needs to take part of that responsibility as to
Be a smart pedestrian.
Gee, yeah.
Well, I do think that it would be good sometime in the future, I was just thinking about this this morning, to get an update from the chief and the sheriff and state highway people on what is happening with these dual highway improvements. That there's a committee, I'm, I'm, apparently, that's looking into these things.
I don't know.
Whether it's enhanced lighting or other ways of creating safe pedestrian crossings. But it would be nice to have an update on that effort in the near future.
I don't know, but I know that they're coming from all directions, and I know that if you're coming from the hospital and coming the other way from off of Mount Etna, you have a lot that are right there walking, too, as well, where the Pizza Hut is at. And again, it is those with shopping carts. So they're coming from part of the community, but they're going right across, and, you know, even though it's state highway, you know, a lot of that's in the city as well as in the county. Also, the whole trash thing. I appreciate the fact that, yes, we've sent out the paperwork and the light bill and the water bill, but we continue to see all of the trash. We continue to see the blue bins. There are places in this town that you may not have the ability to take the blue bin around back. But for the most part, I would say that probably there's 90% that can go around back, and I think that we need to shore this up. We have all of this stuff that is supposedly on the books since God knows when, but yet we're not doing anything, and the trash is still here. And poor Kristen, he's the one that walks the dog late at night, but boy, I get to see it early in the morning, and it's not when trash pickup's going to happen. And it's just coming down the main road, hitting the, hitting the areas and looking at all of the trash again. So I don't know, and I know that we've got more code that's supposed to be in place, but I don't think the code's going to end up being able to tackle this. We're going to have to do something, and I don't know what. And please just don't tell me a committee, because I'm about ready to go knock on doors and say, okay, you know what? This is what needs to be done. And I'm sure in other communities, when it's a lot cleaner, there's a reason. So, but anyway, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Metzner. The only comment I have is just to remind everybody, and I guess to announce to everybody, that the state of the city will be on Tuesday, March 10th, so set your calendars now, and we'll be adjourned. Thank you.